Good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday, December 4, 2025, Clay County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we were going to hear three cases. We will begin with a report from the planning and zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and address, and please remember the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. Our third case tonight, which is what I think most of you are here for, we are going to allow each person to speak for three minutes. We're going to have a timekeeper. At the end of three minutes, my gavel will ring, your time will be over. We will do anybody that supports first and opposes second, and then we will have a discussion here. Could we be, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a decision-making body for these cases tonight. They will not go to the county commission unless it is appealed. If a citizen has questions about the appeal process, please contact Planning and Zoning Department. Could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance?
Yes, Chairman. Tom Degenhart.
Present.
David Rotis.
Present.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Present.
Mark Beggs.
Present.
Randall Morris.
Present.
Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Here. Tonight, we also have election of the chairperson. Do we have a nominee?
I'd make the motion that Brad Scarlett remain as chairperson, second.
Any other nominees? Can we have a roll call vote?
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
We also need an election for the vice chairperson. Do we have a nominee?
I'll make the motion to approve Mark Beggs to remain as vice chair.
Any other nominees?
I'll say.
Do we have a second? Can we have a roll call vote?
Tom Decker.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Abstain.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes of our December 3, 2024, meeting and our January 7, 2025, meeting as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve both the minutes from December and January as presented.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tom Decker.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Abstain.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very well. The first case we were here tonight is case number February 25-103, RZ/P. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes, please.
Alrighty. So, this is the proposed subdivision of Jobu Junction. Currently, the property is roughly 40 acres, zone agricultural, unplanted, and has access from Francis Road. This proposal is to subdivide the 40 acres into four lots. All four lots will be zone residential ranchette or R5, and they will all include the agricultural land preservation. This proposal falls under the natural resources tier of the 2008 Clay County Comprehensive Plan, which allows for one unit per 20 acres, or an exception to the, uh, to the 20-acre minimum being five-plus acres with an agricultural land preservation. So, staff believes that this proposal is compliant with the 2008 Comprehensive Plan. So, this is the surrounding area. You can see that lighter greenish color is all ag-zone property. You can see quite a bit of it, but you can also see some sporadic residential zone lots. Any of those lots range from four to 10 acres in this area. Staff believes this proposal is consistent with the surrounding area. Staff has not received any opposition leading up to the planning and zoning meeting. With all of our rezoning cases, we publish this case in the newspaper, we post a rezoning sign out on the site, and sent a total of 28 letters to adjoining and nearby properties. We have not received any objections from outside agencies. Staff is recommending approval with three conditions. They include changes to recording copies of the plat, a removal of a structure, and a pond, uh, pond inspection. It's also important to note that this case can be approved or denied by this commission. It will not be forwarded to the county commission unless there's an appeal. Staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present.
Does anybody on the board have any questions? Very well, thank you. Would the applicant please step forward, state your name and address, please?
Yes, Chris Higgins, 5410 Five Corners Road, Smithville, Missouri.
Do you have anything to present to support your application tonight?
No, I think it's all there for you guys.
Okay. Do you understand the staff's report? Do you have any questions on that?
No, I understand it, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Board, do you have any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? No? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Any other discussion by the board? Can I have a motion for the case being heard for the rezoning? Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve, excuse me, the number again, case number February 25-103, RZ/P.
I'll say. Second?
Second.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Can we have a motion for the case being heard for the preliminary plat approval?
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Yeah, and just to be, just to be clear, the motion is with conditions?
Motion with conditions?
Yes, thank you.
And the second?
Yes.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
The next case we're here tonight is case number February 25-104F, a request for final plat approval.
Uh, yes, Chairman. I'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record?
Yes, please.
Alright, so this is the, uh, the final plat for Jobu Junction, the case we just went over with the rezoning and preliminary. Um, staff believes that the, the final plat is compliant with the approved preliminary plat and it meets Section 151-3.6D of the 2011 Land Development Code. Again, staff is recommending approval with the three conditions, and staff would be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have, and the applicant is present.
Thank you. Board have any questions for staff? Thank you. Will the applicant please step forward, state your name and address again?
Chris Higgins, 5410 Five Corners Road, Smithville, Missouri.
Do you have anything further to present?
I don't believe so.
Do you understand the staff's report?
I do.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? No? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? No. Any other board discussion? Can I have a motion for the case being heard?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of Jobo Junction with the attachments set out in Exhibit A attached to the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tom Decker.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Uh, Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
The final case tonight is case number December 24-115A. Can we have the report, please?
Yes, Chairman, and give me just a second to get to the other presentation.
Sure.
And I would like to add the, uh, report as part of the official record.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, we're talking about the update to the Comprehensive Plan again, Clay County Compass 2040. Um, and my presentation is longer than usual, so feel free to stop me if you have questions, because I'm going to go over a lot of information, hopefully in a somewhat short time period. Um, and my goal for tonight is to present the information here from the members of the public that are here tonight, and then get clear direction from the Planning and Zoning Commission of how we proceed with the goal of having a final plan in front of you in March that you can, uh, vote on, but allow all the public comment tonight where we can just come back in March and vote. So, that's really, uh, where I'd like to get. Um, I do want to just rehash a little bit. Um, so, Comprehensive Plan examines what a community is, where it came from, and crafts a coordinated roadmap for the future. This roadmap guides the growth and development of the county for the next 20 years, and has revisited it often to insurance relevance. So, a cou- a couple things here I want to mention is, like I mentioned in December, uh, we expect this to be a living document, a working document that we are going to revisit at least yearly, where we can discuss what, what is working, what's not working. Uh, the public can make comments, and it can be amended as needed. Um, I also want to be clear that what we're presenting to you tonight is mainly the land use section of this plan. Obviously, that's the hot topic. There are 300-plus other pages in this plan that there was not opposition to or a lot of discussion about that still is part of the plan, and staff would like to see adopted, but I'm going to focus on the land use map and the land, uh, use districts tonight. And I, I, since that December meeting, uh, Clay County Planning and Zoning Staff has kind of led the process to amend that land use map and those land use districts. Obviously, the county, uh, partnered with Olson Studio as our consultant for this project, and they've done a great job of collecting all the information, getting the public input, and getting us to hear, uh, to, to the December meeting, and staff has kind of taken it and ran with it from there, because we are the, going to be the ones visiting with the citizens on a day-in, a day-out basis as to how you can develop, um, and how we implement this plan. And I just want to be clear that the land use section of this plan is obviously only for the unincorporated sections of the county. So, we went over this in December. This is the, the plan, or the timeline for the plan. It was broken down into four phases. Uh, really, the two big phases were the engagement phase, that I'll have a slide later on showing all the engagement that was done, and then we are in the refinement and implementation, uh, stage of the timeline, um, with the goal of getting the plan adopted. So, I'm, I'm going to talk about our current plan, the December map, and the proposed or updated map that I'm going to present to you tonight, because I think there's some misunderstanding about what our current plan is. So, our current plan is from 2008. Um, as we go through all of these maps, I'm going to try to draw the best I can, but all these maps, anything in gray is within city limits, and our land use map doesn't regulate. In the 2008 plan, uh, it broke it down, broke the unincorporated sections down into three sections. The section around Smithville Lake, which is the natural resources tier, this pink area is the urban services tier. It's the area that tends to be closer to the cities, and then north and east of Liberty is the rural low-density tier. Um, and there was, or there is, in our current plan, um, commercial or industrial called along the major highways, 92, 69, um, a little bit along 35 as well. So, the, the overview, or the main things to know about our current plan, is it set a 20-acre minimum. So, countywide, if you wanted to subdivide, 20 acres was the guideline. Now, there were exceptions to that, and one of the exceptions was a five-acre lot if it qualified as a farmstead dwelling. So, you, you're probably familiar with those. We bring those in front of you every once in a while. Um, a farmstead dwelling is a home that was built 1980 or before. So, if a farmer had 40 acres and an old house on it, they could subdivide five acres around the house, and that meets an exemption, uh, countywide. Also, in the plan, there were denser lots allowed in the rural and urban tiers if on municipal level services. So, here we're talking about interior street and subdivisions with smaller lots as long as they're on a central sewer system. So, that was allowed in two of the tiers. And then the biggest thing is, there was an exception table that was provided. It was designed to be temporary, um, and it was only designed to be used as we transitioned from the old comp plan to the 2008 comp plan, and it was supposed to go away. The issue with that is, it never went away. So, it granted two exceptions. A five-acre lot with agricultural land preservation in the natural and rural tiers, and a 10-acre lot in the, uh, with agricultural land preservation in the urban tier. So, if you look back at this map, the yellow and green areas were allowed five-plus acre lots with that ALP. The pink area was a blanket 10 plus with that ALP in that exception table. So, I'm not going to go into great detail on this map. This was the one we presented in December. It is similar to the one we're presenting tonight. What staff really tried to do with changing this, we did a couple things. We took all the comments from the December meeting. We, um, looked at our zoning map a little closer, and we tried to take those comments and take that zoning map and kind of rework the land use district. So, you will see some changes, um, in the updated plan that I'll present tonight. So, we're still talking about December. The biggest talking points for the December map is it established a managed, managed growth area around cities. So, if you look back, that's the brown area around all the city limits. That's designed to be an area, if we have proposed development, we involve the city, because we don't want to do anything that's going to inhibit the, the city from annexing or expanding in the future. Uh, this, this, uh, map also allowed smaller lots to the ci- uh, closer to the cities. So, overall, with all of our comprehensive plans, they are designed to push the denser developments towards the city, adjacent to the cities or in the cities, um, but still allow some subdividing in the unincorporated sections. So, on this map, uh, this is a five-acre area. These tan ac- uh, I'm sorry, I went the wrong way. This is a five-acre area, uh, and then these gold areas are, next to the managed growth area, is a three-acre area. And then this, this map also had a 20-acre area around Smithville Lake, and the northeast section of Clay County, and a 40-acre area east of Liberty, uh, and the northern section of Clay County. And it also included, over here in the blue, an area, an area that, um, did not set a minimum lot size. It was a preservation area where each case would be handled differently or, or uniquely. Um, in this map, subdivisions were allowed in the residential and resident, and estate residential, which is the tan and the gold area, and commercial and industrial was allowed along major highways. That's similar to our current plan. So, now, I'm going to talk about the updated plan. So, you can see, it looks somewhat similar, but there are some changes. So, again, gray is inside city limits. We still have the managed growth area, uh, next to the cities, but that's been expanded. We still have the five-acre minimum area. Now, I'm, I'm going to start talking about minimums, but there's going to be exceptions to those minimums. So, we kind of mimicked our current plan and created an exception table for each of these districts. So, the tan area is a five-acre minimum unless you meet an exemption. Over here, north of Carney and Excelsior, um, this area down to the south was an ag area by the previous map. We, uh, changed that to a five-plus acre area with some extra agricultural land preservation requirements, and I'll show some maps of why we, uh, changed that. Then we have the blue area. This is a newly created area around Smithville Lake. Um, and we're introducing a new idea with this map, where in some of these transition zones, we're proposing, if somebody comes in and wants to subdivide within this district, we treat each parcel differently, and we take a half-mile radius around that parcel, and whatever the median lot size is within that list of those properties within that half-mile radius is what they are allowed to match. And I'll show you some examples of, of some lots and what those lot sizes come out to. Then we have the area north of, uh, the northern section of Clay County, and then east of Liberty and south of Excelsior Springs. That is a 20-plus acre minimum area. Again, it's going to have exceptions, so it's 20, or you meet one of the exceptions. And then, the last area is, uh, kind of around Cooley Lake. It's the, uh, majorly less dense area of the county. It's a 40-acre area, which was part of the original map, and again, it's 40 acres, or you meet one of the exceptions. Um, and actually, I didn't talk about transition zones. So, um, we've created, between the five-acre areas and the 20-acre areas, we've created a transition zone where we see transitioning from the five to the 20. So, I see five-acre lots in that area, 10, 12, going up to 20, and we're going to achieve that by doing that half-mile radius again. So, taking that half-mile radius, whatever the median is, they need to be consistent with that lot size. Um, the commercial and industrial largely stayed the same way, other than we reworded that land use district for commercial and industrial. So, it could allow residential on a case-by-case basis, um, as, as long as the residential proposal was not at a major intersection, intersection where commercial should apply, and it was consistent with the next, uh, adjacent residential land use. So, we just opened that up a little bit as well. So, this kind of shows going from the city review area to five-acre area to a transition area to a 20 or 40-acre area. Um, and I'm going to show you maps of how we came to this. Um, but again, the, the idea is to push the dense development towards the cities, but allow, because we heard a lot in December that property owners want to be able to create a five or 10-acre area, 10-acre lot on a not consistent basis, or a, a lot every few years, if they need to. So, that's the updated plan. Um, the highlights are, again, we increased that managed growth area to one mile. This still allows the smaller lots closer to the cities. However, if it's within that one-mile radius, the city has to agree with it. So, we're not going to, you know, the city may say they want large lot residential, which is three acres. If they say that, then that would be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Then we have the transition areas around Smithville Lake and between the five and 20-acre areas, and then the 20-acre areas north and east of Liberty, um, and then a 40-acre area east of Liberty. And then, we're going to talk about the exceptions here on the next slide. Um, we're also proposing to include conservation district subdivisions as part of the plan in certain land use districts. So, a conservation district is a way to allow more dense development if a certain percentage of the land is preserved as open space. Generally, that's designed to preserve streams, floodplain, uh, wooded areas, things like that. Now, the unique thing is, the conservation district is handled in the land development code. So, as I stated la- year in December, step one is adopting the update to the Comprehensive Plan. Step two is going to be staff amending the land development code to align with the Comprehensive Plan. So, currently, we do have a conservation district in our land development code. However, I would want to update it to current standards, so that will change. Um, but what staff likes about conservation districts is it does allow the option for a subdivision. It would be required to be on enclosed sewer, um, and it does still preserve or, or require a certain amount of open space. And then, as I stated, we reworded the commercial and industrial, uh, land use district to address residential. So, I know this is going to be really hard to read on the screen, but hopefully on your, on your screens, and we handed out, uh, paper copies to the, to the public, um, this gives the exemptions for each land use tier. So, on the left-hand side, we start at the biggest land use tier, which is the 40-acre land use tier, and this is, you either do 40 acres, or you do one of these other options. So, the first option is that five-acre lot that qualifies as a farmstead dwelling. Again, it's a, a house built pre-1980. Um, I did have some discussion with some folks that would like to see that changed to a more current year, like 1990, 1995. Staff has not proposed that change, but the commission could, could choose to do that. The second exemption is a 10-acre lot with 50% of it in the ALP, and it limits you to one lot per parcel every five years. We present this as an option, because we heard in the December meeting that landowners would like to be able to subdivide a lot here and there as they need to. Um, but it, it also doesn't allow everybody to go to the 10-acre lot, like the current comp plan, where the land gets eaten up in those, those sized lots. And then it also gives you that option to do the half-mile radius, and whatever that median lot size is, being consistent with that median lot size. Then we go to the 20-acre area. 20-plus acre lots, the farmstead dwelling, a five-acre lot with 30% of it in the agricultural land pres- preservation. This lot would have to be conveyed to a family member, and one lot every five years. And again, that was, um, that was specifically to address comments at the December meeting. Then we give the option of the half-mile radius again, and then this is where the conservation district starts in. Again, it would be interior street and subdivisions on municipal level services. Now, I do want to address, just because it's a, it's an option within that tier, there's also rezoning and plating criteria. rezoning and plating criteria that have to be addressed. So just because this says it's an option, doesn't mean if somebody proposes that, that it would be approved. And then we have the area around Smithville Lake, which is that transition zone, five acre farmstead dwelling, the half mile radius, and then the conservation district. Then we have the area between the five acres and the 20. It allows the farmstead dwelling and then lots consistent with the median and the half mile radius. Then we have the gold area, which if you remember was north of Excelsior and northeast of Carney. Five plus acre lots. We're going to require additional ALP in that area because there's a large amount of floodplain, and I'll show you that in a future slide. Again, you can do the farmstead dwelling, or you can do the conservation district. Then the last, second to last area is the estate residential, which is the tan area here and up here. And it's five plus acres. It allows interior streeted subdivision with county maintained infrastructure with septic systems if they're a five acre lot average. Now, I would foresee this type of subdivision being an interior streeted subdivision without curb and gutter. This is more of a rural type subdivision. But that will be handled as part of the land development code requirement. And obviously, we would want all of the public that's here tonight to be part of that conversation when it comes in front of the board. And then it gives the option of a three acre average on county maintained infrastructure if you do the combined sewer system. And then it also allows the conservation district. And then we go back to the managed growth area. Again, we're going to work with the city to, for any development within that area. So I know that's a lot really quick. And I want to show you some maps next. So I broke the county down into, I think, three sections. So this is Kansas City, city limits. Liberty, city limits is over here. So this is everything north of Kansas City and Liberty and south of 92. That is 92 Highway up there. And you can see this area, interior streeted subdivisions scattered throughout. So if you go to our updated land use map, it goes from the managed growth area to the five acre area, that that five acre area, if we go back to the previous slide, allows the conservation district, oh, I'm sorry, I'm done on the wrong one. It allows the conservation district, the three acre average on municipal level services, and the five acre on septic systems. And the reason we thought that matched what's existing out there now, and we want to see the development go from the city limits and push its way out. So then we go, this is 92 Highway to the south, Clinton County line to the north. Obviously, you can see Smithville Lake over here. And then we've kind of taken this area in a couple different districts, and this won't be totally accurate, but this is roughly that natural.
You might try to use a thicker pen.
Okay.
Those are, I can kind of see that it can be better if it was a little wider and make it.
I honestly don't know if I can do that.
But maybe a different color, maybe just my eyes. I'm having a hard time seeing little red X's.
So this is the blue area on the updated map. And you can see in this area, there's multiple, anything in yellow or the orange is a three to five to 10 acre lot. So that's why we came up with that transition zone using the median lot size. And I'll show you some examples of that. Then if you go to the far northern area of the county, that's mainly agricultural. That lies in the 20 acre area or one of the exemptions. Then over here, again, you have a bunch of interior streeted subdivisions. So if we go to the land use map, this is the transition zone where we're trying to match the existing lots that are out here. Here's the ag area that matches the ag area, and here's those other interior streeted subdivisions that we would allow five plus acres around. Then we go to north and east of Carney. This is Carney over here. This is Excelsior over here. And you can see, especially over in here and here, there's a lot of three to five to 10 acre lots. And then the northern section is mainly agricultural. This area by the previous, by the map in December was all ag, and we changed that to five plus acres. So you go, you see now, this is five acres. All this gold is five acres. This is the transition zone to go from five to 20, and this is the 20 acre area or one of the exemptions. Then we go south of Excelsior and east of Liberty. Liberty over here, Excelsior is up that way. Again, a lot of floodplain, and I should go back. You can see the floodplain going through this district. That's why we're proposing the additional ALP in this area, but still allowing the five acres. So again, if I go back here to east of Liberty and south of Excelsior, quite a bit of development within that one mile radius next to Liberty, but all of this over here is mainly undeveloped. So if we go to our land use map, we go from the managed growth area to a transition area to a 20 acre area to a 40 acre area or one of those exemptions. So that's some of the thinking behind the updated land use map. I do want to give you some examples because I know that median lot size is different. So we picked, this is just south of Smithville Lake. This would be within the blue area around Smithville Lake. You can see this one's unique because it's a large lot, it's 77 acres, but it has a lot of three, sevens, and fives around it, and the median lot size came out to 7.3 acres. Here's another one in that same area. It's off 168th Street. This one's bigger, it's 15 and a half, but has a lot, has some fours and fives and tens and fourteens and thirties around it, and the median lot size came out to 13.5 acres. Here's another one within the blue area. It's a bigger lot, 44 acres. It came out right at 10 acres. It has, everything in yellow or red is either a 10 or a 5. And it's also still got some bigger lots around it. So again, if they propose to divide that, they would need to be consistent with a 10 acre lot. Now we're going a little bit farther east. This is kind of in the transition zone off of C Highway. It's two 40 acre lots that are owned by the same property owner, did the median on that one, and it came out to 11.5. You can see some, three acre lots to the south, and then there's some larger lots to the east and north. And then we did one just east of Liberty. So this is right at the one mile buffer, so this is all that development you just saw east of Liberty. There were a lot of three acre lots done in the 70s on the east side. This one would be within that transition area, and this one came out to a five acre median lot size. Then we went a little farther east. This one's roughly 40 acres. You know, got not a whole lot of small ones around it, but mainly ag, and it came out to a 13 acre median lot size. So I showed this slide at the December meeting. Again, the county commission voted six to zero to recommend adoption. However, they saw the original land use map, so I just want to make sure that's known. Obviously, we were here December 3rd, and we're here tonight talking about it in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is going to be a continuous project to update the public and have public meetings about this. So as I stated, we see this coming back to the Planning and Zoning Commission on a yearly basis for comments, changes. But once this is adopted, we are going to have some open houses where the public can come and ask questions, look at the maps, and discuss the plan as well. Again, we talked about those items that would need to be revised in the land development code. We started working on that. That's going to be a couple-year process at least. And then we would work to continue, to achieve as many of those goals and strategies listed in the comp plan as possible. We would work with outside agencies, county departments, citizens to achieve those. And again, I showed this slide as part of the December presentation. This is all of the public outreach that mainly Olson did, trying to compile all that information into this plan. And as I stated in December, it is, I enjoyed reading all the public comments and then reviewing back on the plan because you can see how the plan was compiled from those public comments. So late in the day, we received a letter that I believe each of you has at your desk from a citizen, so we would like to add that as Exhibit A as part of the official record tonight. And again, what I would like is to hear the public comments, have a good discussion amongst the Planning and Zoning Commissioners, and then leave this meeting with clear direction on how we proceed from here. And I am happy to answer any questions that the Commissioners have.
So I've got one that, can you jump back where you did that 40 acre, where you're doing the half acre, half mile radius?
This one?
That one right there. So it doesn't look like there's hardly anything going on around there, and you came up with a 13 acre average?
Well, you see, that's like a three acre lot. There's a one, there's like a three. So it can be deceiving, even though they're zoned ag. Back in the day, they were allowed to create some of these one acre parcels and keep your ag zoning. Now, current day, we'd make them rezone, and it would show up as residential. But.
So you're basically drawing a half mile radius around that parcel, count the number of one acre tracks, fives, whatever they are, then averaging those?
Well, not averaging, so we're taking, so where it's a median. So every lot that's within a half mile is listed in order from smallest to largest, and that middle number is the median. And you can see, it's probably better on this one, you can see a four, a three, 11, three, there's a 12, I mean, there's 14, nine, nine, so it can be deceiving by the ag zoning. But it is not an average.
Okay.
So the use of median drops off the largest and the smallest, and we get a more representative size?
Well, everything I've read on median is it is a better representation of the data than using mean or average.
Kip, I still don't understand, you know, the 70s, 80s, and 90s, you know, you pointed out multiple subdivisions that had three acre lots, and now we want a minimum of five acre unless it goes to a septic system, you know. What's the reason of not doing, of being able to do a three acre anymore? Don't we have newer, greater septic systems in the county than?
Well, I will preface this by saying I am not an expert on septic systems. The land development code currently requires five acres to do a septic, so that would require a land development code change, so it could change. I think staff's view is that our preference would be, rather than having 30 or 40 individual septic systems for a subdivision, would be to have one community shared sewer system just for, you know, the environmental, not having, you know. I think some folks think that if they're on septic, there's no maintenance involved with septic systems, and we have, we hear of nightmares from the health department about septic systems.
I would, I actually support that, just being on a district, a sewer district where you had about 140 houses on it, it was a central plant. But the only time anybody worried about their septic was when it was, or their wastewater was when it was coming through their basement. And when you have a central plant, nice thing about those is they're permitted by the reserve department, DNR, their effluent is checked quarterly, and if you're out of compliance, then, you know, you've got some enforcement there. And the other side of that is, the DNR, you know, when they set their standard, it seems like every five years, they bump it up. I know we spent quite a bit of money on our central plant. First thing, it was bacterial loads, we had to do UV protection, then it became nitrate, ureate, it was a plethora of things every year, so it kept getting better. And another nice thing is it's a one-point source of effluent, so that can be tested as opposed to a septic system where there'd be 20 of them. It's just a little easier from enforcement, from making sure it's good quality water that leaves the property, so on and so forth. I definitely support those central plants opposed to 20 septic systems.
And also, on some of the 20, 40 acre tracks, like say, it is possible to split off a five on one of those persons, because you know, if you're going for a house loan, it's non-conforming over a certain acreage, and you'd want to plot off a five acre track or something just for.
Yes, so good question. So in the 40 acre area, you can do a five acre, if it is a farmstead or a 10 plus acre with 50% of the ALP, 50% of it in ALP. In the 20 acre area, it allows the five acre as a farmstead and a five acre with 30% in ALP. So the 40 acre area, you have to do 10. The 20 acre area, you're allowed to do five.
And you've mentioned municipal level services several times. Just for everyone's benefit, you want to define what that means?
Yeah, for county purposes, municipal level services basically would require that central sewer system. Obviously, the water supply for any subdivision is going to be rural water districts. The county would be typically responsible for the maintenance of the roads. And then the, as you stated, MDNR would regulate the central sewer system.
Any other questions from the board?
And can I add one more thing?
Yes.
So I just want to be clear, it doesn't have to be the map we presented in December or the map that we're presenting tonight. There could be things that are deleted, taken from the December meeting or this meeting and compiled together. So I just want to make sure it's not either or, it could be a combination of the two.
I did have one more question. You mentioned something about commercial. You were redoing, and I heard you mention residential in the same sentence as commercial. And I just wanted to clear that up for me.
So there was, yeah, so let me go back to one of the maps. So there was some concern, I believe, about some of these commercial areas like here, and this technically is going to be all commercial. So there was concern if they owned land on the fringe of that commercial zoning, really the commercial should be along the highway itself. So we rewrote that land use district to basically state that any residential proposal would be taken as a case by case scenario. The purpose of the commercial is to be at major intersections, major travel points. But residential would be allowed if it's consistent with the next closest land use district. So if you, let's say you had some land right on the edge there, and it butts a five acre area. If it's not at a major intersection and isn't seen as a prime commercial spot or lot, then yes, we would allow residential development that's consistent with that next land use. Does that make sense?
Yep. Thanks.
I have a question, Kip. If you're trying to qualify a split based on the median half mile radius, does that half mile radius, does it extend into an adjacent county?
That's a good question, and no, we would not extend it because we are, our land use map is specific to Clay County. So I don't, my initial thought is we would not.
In the managed growth areas, you talk about getting city input. Are we going to require that? Require the city to?
Well, that's, honestly, that's probably my biggest concern with the whole map. Because that can be like pulling teeth sometimes. So I kind of want to see how that goes. But I think it's a good, good plan, a good idea to start with, and we may need to amend it as we go. Because, you know, I had a discussion today with a citizen that was worried that we were going to, they didn't quite understand the managed growth area, and they, I think, live or work in Carney, and they are concerned that Carney's not going to be able to grow because of all the five and 10 acre lots that the county's done around, adjacent to the city. So I explained the managed growth area. They seemed to like that. I do have some concerns about that, but yeah, we're probably going to present some cases to the Planning and Zoning Commission where we didn't get very specific comments to the city, and we're going to have to work through those.
So that runs along Kansas City? So, that runs along Kansas City, Missouri as well, right? That managed growth area?
It does, and they have, so there is an annexation map that's part of the comprehensive plan. So, part of the process that Olson did, they met with all the adjacent cities, got their input, they indicated where their annexation areas were, and those are noted on another map. So, some of those areas, we have specifics, but some of them, we don't, and the ones that we don't, those are the ones I'm concerned about.
I could see it would be a long time before you get Kansas City to respond to anything you ask.
Actually, I got a response, I was proud, we got a response a couple of weeks ago on a proposal.
I'm surprised, yeah. I think they're taking about four months to issue a building permit, yeah.
And do we currently reach out to the cities when we are with...
We do, so that's a carryover from the, you know, any good comprehensive plan is going to tell you to work with your neighbors. Right now, the comp plan and the LDC say any property within a mile and a half, we should reach out to the city. It's not quite as stringent as this one, but we do practice that, yes.
Any other comments from the board? So, we're going to hear from anyone in the audience that wants to speak, that supports this. We are going to limit you to three minutes. We do ask that you keep your topic on point, and we would also ask that you not repeat what the person before you or the other person, so that we don't hear the same thing over and over again. Everything is recorded, we will go back through. Once we've heard everyone that wants to speak that supports this, then we will hear from everyone that opposes it, and it will be the same three-minute time requirement. And again, please stay on topic, and please try not to repeat what everybody else says, we are recording everything. Question?
Yes, just a question. People who want to support this mean supporting the revised proposal, because somebody might want to support the December proposal rather than the revised one. Would they then speak in the opposition?
No, this is in support of the current, if they have any comments that they like the prior better, or if they had any other changes, they feel free, you've got three minutes. This is anyone that is in support of this change, whether it be tonight's map or the map that we discussed in December. This is just anyone who is in support of what we are discussing for these changes. But you have three minutes per person.
Okay. So, it's support of the revised map and the revised change?
Correct. And if you have any comments in regards to, you like this, but you want changes, that's what we're asking for.
Chairman, can I ask for clarification, because I think some people don't quite understand. So, so you're saying support would be either tonight's map or the December map would be support, if you want to support approving either of those, you would come up during support?
Tonight is about the comprehensive plan with the changes that we have for the issues that we've just discussed. If someone supports this but would like to see something else from the December, please feel free to make that comment tonight, but we are discussing what the plan was that we discussed tonight.
Right, so then they would speak in opposition to tonight's plan?
You can view it however you like, please only speak once. Everyone is going to get to speak one time.
It's one or the other.
If you're in support of December's meeting and you're opposed to tonight, speak in opposition.
Okay.
I think most people are going to feel that the comments that we're doing tonight is relevant because the December, everybody said no to, and we are revising it to try to get that, so you are correct. If you do not like tonight's plan, it's an opposition.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. So, if you're in support, mainly in support of the updated map, they would speak in support, but that doesn't keep them from saying, hey, I'd like to see this changed.
Yes.
And if you're mainly in support of the December map, you would come up in opposition, but that doesn't keep you from saying, hey, I do like this from tonight's presentation?
Correct, sorry. That's much clearer than what I said.
Okay.
Which is why I am the moderator only. Who would like to come up and speak in favor of tonight's plan? Please give your name and address.
My name is Robert Sanders, I live at 22420 Northeast 112th Street in Liberty. We own quite a bit of ground to the east of Liberty, and we've done some developing in the county. And I will say that I oppose the original December proposal. There were several loose ends that weren't addressed. Kip has made a really conscious effort to reach out to the people that were at the meeting, and he's tried to make changes that were agreeable to most people. And I think that the people that were most opposed at that meeting were landowners, people that really had a vested interest. And I kind of took that the people that were in favor of that December meeting, you know, I don't know whether they were landowners or just, you know, general public. But I feel like the people that actually have a vested interest, my feeling is that, you know, their opinion should probably weigh more. And, you know, I appreciate what Kip's done and how he's reached out and tried to get a consensus and make the changes to make the whole plan work, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Hi, I'm Joanne Lawson, I live at 15609 Salem Road outside of Excelsior Springs. We are out in the county. The plan last time, I thought was great, but with the opposition that it had, I felt that was a little conflicting to all of you. I think that he has made some great strides. It's not that I absolutely love it, but what I find very appealing with this plan is that we have options. If you want to make a change, you want to come in and say, hey, I know it says 20, but I want two 10s, you know, we're giving you that option to at least bring it forward. In everything that we've done, and not that I've been here for 30 years in this job, but what I've seen is many, many people have come forward to the commission, they've come before you, and they've said, well, you know, it's not what it's supposed to be, but here's what we'd like to do. More often than not, we, that is approved, you know, unless it's something unbelievably out in left field. I think there was so much time, money, which is always my hot button, money being spent, and we want to see something, some value for our dollar. I think that Kip did a tremendous job on this. I think that it's awesome. I think that last time, people were saying, well, it was only a few people, a thousand people that were on that survey, that were making their thoughts known. No, he was out at all kinds of meetings, there were rural people that talked about it, there were in-town people that talked about it. I would very much like to request that you approve this last plan that he has put in, he's put a lot of effort in, and he's our expert. I think it's time in this county, we hire people to do a job, let's listen to what they say. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else that would like to speak that supports?
I'm E.R.W., Ash, the 3rd, 17607 Northeast 52nd. I'd like to commend Kip and his committee on having open minds and listening to the December meeting and the opposition. I think he's come a long way. I still have a question with the, how fair it is to landowners to have different amounts of property required for housing. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to support?
Dirk Tally, 17270 Highway 169 in Smithville, Missouri. Again, I'm going to reiterate what everybody's gotten up here and said, and Kip now looks like a champion after the last meeting, but he really did, he sat down and reviewed it. I would like you guys to take a look at a couple of different things where he mentioned, let's take a look at that exception of going back to 1980, 80 home or 85 home, maybe try to get that moved forward, we've moved this comp plan, however far it is, 15 years, so, you know, move that up to 2005. I really like that refined growth concept in that you follow what is kind of behind you as far as the growth pattern. I may be fighting an uphill battle to encourage you to look at the three versus the five for the septic systems, but your neighbors, all around, you're accepting the three acre tracks, the state allows the three acre tracks. I'm not a septic installer, but we do a lot of these systems and subdivisions that we do. The installer has to go to the county and prove that they have two fields, so I said to Kip, make the developer prove that he has two fields, no matter what his lot size is, by morphology test, so that could allow that to go down to three, but still allow you the safe gate. And the final comment, you know, who decides these exemptions? Maybe it's kind of an open-ended question right now, but when we walk in to Kip's office, who's the one that decides that we meet the exception, so, otherwise, but thanks for the work on it, Kip.
So, I've got a question. So, tell me your thought process behind, you know, increasing the age of what would be considered a farmstead. And what is, why would we move it to 2005? Because when I think of farmstead, I think of old family farm, you know, been there for years, needs to split off some to give to a child or something like that.
Right. And when I think of a farmstead, I probably go back to the 1900s, so, you know, that would mean we were going back and only allowing homes that were built in 1980. I think the concept of what that was, you could chime in if I'm wrong, but farmer has built a home, he's ready to build his new home, his child, may want to move in the old one, maybe having to go back to 1980 is not, you know, it would be nice to go back to 2000. And I was just saying that since that was in your code in 19, or 2008, is that right? Now, we're in 2024, so if it was, you know, you might just try to pull that, pull those dates up to try to match. That was my third.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that supports? Anyone that would like to speak that opposes? Please give your name and address.
Darrell Pageant, 8500 in Highway Orick, Missouri, which I know that sounds like Ray County, but I'm on the far southeast corner of Clay County, about a mile inside the Clay County line, and I am in support, I think, of what the changes are probably coming. Kip, like everybody else, has done a great job, he had a private meeting with us too down there, because we have some real estate down here around Cooley Lake area. I think there just needs to be a couple of things clarified a little bit, because, and Kip went over this really well with us. The first one, where we're in the 40 acre area, you know, there's a 10 acre plus with 50% of it in the ALP, or one lot for parcel every five years, but in the 20 acre area, it's five acres, but the line below that says conveyed to family member, but the 40 acre does not have that. What does that mean, Kip? And, because, I mean, we talked about that when we met, that if the family wanted to convey some of that to family members in our 40 acre area, is that still possible? Because it's left out on this sheet.
Can you answer that?
Yes, Chairman, so, I'm not going to go back to that table, but the thinking to do, you know, the 40 acre is generally larger parcels, so that's why it's 10 instead of five. Just because it doesn't say conveyed to a family member, doesn't mean it couldn't be conveyed to a family member, it just doesn't have to be.
Okay.
Because I thought we heard at the December meeting, a lot of, in that 40 acre area, you wanted to be able to divide five or 10 acres and then be able to sell it. So, this would allow you to sell it to anybody, whereas in the 20 acre area, it's got to be for a family member.
Okay, so I understand, okay, so that's what the reasoning for that is, that makes sense? I mean, I figured you'd just pick one for both areas, but that's not the plan, I guess, so, okay. Because I know an example for us, two times, we've had to split some half-sectioned tracks to five different family members to air them down. And some of them as small as the five acres, they're up to, you know, 200, but that was my question, when it doesn't say conveyed to family member, should it be included in that area that you should be able to convey it to a family member?
Would you like to comment?
Well, I would say, that's up to the board, we could require that both of them be, include that language. But to me, the, excuse me, the 10 acre gives you more flexibility, so that's what I was trying to...
Without limitation to family members.
Yes, and also keep in mind, I didn't go over this because you can't go over everything, but anytime anybody comes to us and wants to subdivide land, as part of our land development code, there's exemptions that you can meet. So, right now, the exemption to plating is if you have 40-plus acres with 100 feet of road frontage with access. So, let's say you have a farm that's 200 acres, you can right now, without doing anything other than your deed work, subdivide that into five 40s, as long as they have 100 feet of road frontage with access and do nothing through the Planning and Zoning Department. Now, part of our land development code amendments Shane and I are going to consider, and we're probably going to present to you, to lower that number from 40 to maybe 30, because I don't think we should be really plating 30 acre lots anyway. So, maybe reducing that to 30, but requiring a little bit more road frontage with them, which would also give large landowners more flexibility, where they can divide them into 30 acre pieces without going in and plating. So, those are some changes that possibly could come as well.
That explains it a little better for me, too, so.
Thanks.
And then another thing about the map, too, is it, these lines are just right now just preliminary, they're not finalized yet, because just looking at the map here where it shows the JJ property line, you know, everything from JJ East is pretty much river bottoms, which I kind of agree with, it's staying in that 40 acre minimum, but it does hurt the value of some of those tracks west of JJ towards double E that might be able to subdivide into the 20 acre minimums. Does that make sense, Kip?
Do you want to comment on that?
Because when we met, I mean, you know, we talked about all the agricultural land...
Yeah, and I just don't want to get into a back and forth where...
Yeah, we probably need to keep this as remarks, and then if the board has questions for staff, or the staff wants to answer.
Thank you.
Well, I paused it when Kip was talking. That's why I say if we keep the remarks to three minutes, and then staff can reply later, instead of the back and forth. Please give your name and address.
Bobby Oaks, 1631 Northwest 75th Street, and I just got to say, wow, because this is really hitting me like a ton of bricks. You have a list of all these meetings that you had, these email blasts and everything, I got zero. And I want to see a plan here, I want to know who started this, who's working on it, why are we doing it, you know? I'm not for it or against it, I just want to know more information, because, and I want all these meetings, I want to know times, dates, I want to know the minutes of the meeting, who said what, because we're being uninformed. We are in an age of transparency. This was started in an age of not transparency, so I want you to be transparent with the people of Clay County. Whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, you need to provide information. From what you're telling me, you're going to have to send me a stack of information this deep for me to even wade through it, to find out what it's about. Transparency, transparency, transparency.
So, I might just comment, so there's a website, the Compass website, which has a lot of that information that you're asking about. So, yeah, have Kip give you the webpage for that, that's probably the...
We're not doing back and forth, this is remarks, hold your comments until all the remarks are done. He can answer any questions and do a rebuttal after all the remarks are done. We just need to get to the three minutes each on the remarks. Please give your name and address.
Hi, and thank you, each of you, for your service to the county. In speaking in favor of the comprehensive plan as we sought in December, which I guess means I'm in the right place at the right time here, I wish I knew exactly what I could say to move you to vote yes and pass that plan. I personally come from a quality of life viewpoint and one that values... one that values the natural resources as they currently exist in our county. I was surprised and delighted to hear strangers at the public meetings voice the same values, and I wish they were all here tonight. I know there were several of us there, present in the December meeting. I'm a landowner to the gentleman's question, but I don't think that that alone will be what sways you to vote for the original plan. So I looked harder at it, including the original designated use map, to see what might encourage you to vote yes. The first point, if you look at the map, you'll see based on community input, the managed growth area, estate residential and residential zones combined yield roughly 49.41% of the map on incorporated land. If you combine that with the housing opportunities within the incorporated portion of the county, you see that over 75% of our county's land is available and/or appropriate for housing or mixed use with housing growth opportunities. However, my second point is that the remaining less than 25% should be protected for larger land plots with 20 and 40 acre minimums. Why? Plenty of counties across the country are dealing with challenges just like ours, and research from universities and institutions like Center for Neighborhood Technology have been conducted on the value of permanent open space for land use in rapidly developing counties. They have found increases to nearby land values up to several miles away to be up to three times what they are for redeveloped open space, like parks and golf courses, which also add value but less. Original open space is better. This means not just the few who live in the ag residential and ag sectors, but all those who live and develop in the swaths of managed growth, estate residential, and residential, all profit. As a third point, I'll offer up the facts that if planning and zoning were to choose to break up existing larger plots by not passing the plan as written in December, we as a county would very likely see higher costs to the county in terms of cost for road safety and maintenance, since developers only have to pay for costs the first two years. In fact, in terms of our infrastructure budget, roads and bridges make up 57% of the infrastructure budget. If land is further subdivided, with the exception of farmers being able to break off modest pieces for family, the other two areas of infrastructure, facilities and parks, will likely suffer. Costs for provision-
Thank you.
And I'll add, Ms. Farnsworth provided an exhibit with her comments. That'll be added to the official record as Exhibit B.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Stacy Rule, 704 Feltzvar, Kearney, Missouri. I would like to read my husband's comment first, as he was unable to be here. Good evening, board members. My apologies, as I wish I could have attended in person but had a prior engagement. I hope this finds you all well, and again, I appreciate your time and service. For the sake of time, I will keep this short. I would assume you all volunteered to take on the responsibility of being a board member to serve this great county and the wonderful people in it. After listening to the concerns from both sides in this last meeting, and as I stated at that time, I believe that most of us on both sides are wanting the same outcome, just different paths to get there, so to speak. Priority number one should be the concerns and needs of our citizens. If you believe in that, then I don't believe this plan is the right path to take. I would encourage you all to ask yourselves, what would you want if you owned land and were faced with these same regulations? Would you want more control or less control over your situation and the land you own? This plan will give less control to the landowners, and that's not what any of us want. Not to mention the plan that is already in place works. Why fix it if not broken? I thank you all for your time and God bless. Sincerely, Matt Rule. And then my comment regarding the Clay County 2040 Compass Comprehensive Plan proposed by the commission, it seems that the private property rights of the sovereign citizens of Clay County would be seriously compromised at the expense of the zoning committee's unnecessary administrative overreach. Page 24 of the plan describes a direction statement for the commission, which reads, ensures healthy and strategic economic growth while protecting natural and agricultural areas and preserving the rural character of the county. My first question would be, who would be naive enough to believe that any county jurisdiction can ensure economic growth for its citizens by allowing it to regulate the sale of their private property? A republican form of government is grounded in the concept that sovereign people are free to ensure their own destiny. And my final comment, and I encourage all of you to read and go over in great detail the UN Agenda 21, Agenda 2030, all of the different names that it gives. Put this beside this comprehensive plan and really look into that and what this does to the sovereignty of the citizens. The looming battle of ideas should be recognized as a classic and perhaps ultimate, the battle between liberty and tyranny. The social, economic, and political transformation sustainable development requires will mean the suppression of unalienable rights for all people. Please reconsider the rights, the private property rights of the people. I appreciate all of your time. God bless you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Christine Bunch, 106 US 169 Highway in Smithville, Missouri. David, Tom, Mark, Brad, Jerry, Mike, and Tom. You guys have a really big decision tonight. You're at a crossroads completely, and I understand. You volunteer your time, and I appreciate your service. But we elect our Clay County commissioners for a reason. We trust them. We believe in them. We support them. And I support their decision in December for the plan that they had in place. They are commissioners. They are elected for a reason. We trust them. If you change that plan tonight, you're basically foregoing not only the commissioner's decision, but the voters who voted of those commissioners in to make those right decisions for us. Protecting our land is important in America. It's very important in Clay County. We're the middle of the country. Facebook down the street, we basically have a target on all of our undeveloped land. You keep developing this land, we're not going to be able to rebuild more land. Once it's gone, it's gone. So please, consider what the Clay County commissioners have voted for, and don't change this plan. I support the plan that was in December and stand behind our Clay County commissioners in their decision. And Kip was very, very kind to everybody that walked into his office, and he's worked really hard. So this is not to discredit his new plan. I think he worked really hard on the first plan, and I think with the ones in opposition, the real estate agents, developers, of course, he, you know, was trying to do a good job and service to us all, and I respect that greatly. But let's stick with the original plan and protect our land in Clay County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Jack Boehner. 9414 Northeast 91st Terrace, Kansas City. The preamble to the 2021 Constitution of Clay County states that it was created to, quote, guarantee the right of our citizens to determine our best form of government. Our inherent right to effect lawful change carries with it also the responsibility to preserve that which exists. And the people of Missouri have granted a limited area of jurisdiction to their respective zoning commissions, according to Chapter 64 of Missouri Revised Statutes. So outside of HOA agreements or other legally binding contracts, it seems that a mandatory minimum acreage building requirement imposed on an unincorporated private property would essentially deprive a landowner of his lawfully devoted right to sell land, since it would restrict his ability to offer a portion of his property to prospective buyers in a manner of his own choosing. In fact, in the course of civil litigation, this position could actually frame a solid argument for the unlawful taking of private property. And why wouldn't it? Because a landowner's property would become virtually unprotected, all because of the actions of the same regulating authority that the people created to ensure its protection in the first plan. Republican government, or true Republican government, can't just be what makes sense or what seems fair to the majority of people in this county. It must be able to protect the inherent private property rights of each one of its sovereign citizens. If it can't, then it seems that every dimension of freedom would be lost, and the real force of self-government would be nullified, because the goal would no longer be to grow and prosper, but rather to continually resist administrative overreach. I have to assume that the best intentions of the zoning committee are reflected in this agenda of the 2040 Compass Comprehensive Plan. And I guess most folks here, including me and my wife, actually do want some level of jurisdictional oversight in place to help safeguard our constitutional right to own and use our private property in a way that isn't violated or violates the rights of others. So my question, to be a general question, and I'm not referring to anything specific, what revision to this plan are the committee members willing to make to ensure that that happens for the people that created it to serve, to serve them, rather? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Jim Pascoe. I am on 7921 168th Street, Smithville. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be involved in how Clay County grows. We're all lucky to be in a community where the thoughts of the citizens are valued. I was born and raised here in Missouri, and I've been a resident of Clay County for 15 years. I had the privilege of being on the Parks and Rec Board for Smithville for a few years and part of their visioning process, the 2019 strategic planning process. We did this, it was done in Smithville, excuse me, to make sure that as Smithville grew, that they didn't lose their character. The plan is being followed. Smithville's thriving. I'm now equally excited. Clay County is seriously looking at future growth. I know from the last meeting, a lot of residents did have the opportunity to have input into the original December plan, which I support. And I really want to state, though, I am not against development, not at all. I know that development's obviously inevitable. This county's growing. Estimates show that it's grown approximately, from approximately 180,000, 85,000 to 260,000 between 2010 and 2023. In the same timeframe, Smithville and Kearney have both virtually doubled in size. So those people all have places to live, and that growth isn't going to slow down. It's great for the tax base, and it's great for the cities. But I think that the cities are doing a really good job of planning for that, and that's why I think we should look at concentrating most of the growth around those cities where the infrastructure exists. The fire, the water, the utilities are much easier if it's concentrated in those areas, as was described in that original plan. County roads aren't designed to handle the construction traffic for these rural developments that pop up out in the middle of nowhere in the county. The water mains are not designed to handle the load, designed to handle fire protection. The response times are not available for fire protection as well as they are when you do cluster in more logical, along larger routes and around cities. I've lived through a house fire. I was really glad we were really close to water and to good response time, or we would have lost our house completely. Clay County is a jewel. Living here is a benefit. My wife and I are landowners. We live over by the lake. We love the recreation it affords us all four seasons. We're birders. We live on the cusp on the line of the, two of the largest flyways in the nation for migratory and waterfowl birds, the Central and the Mississippi Flyways. I grew up as a bird hunter. It's wonderful to be able to see the birds, but those birds need big, open spaces. They need silage. They need fields. They need large, unencumbered land with no light pollution, noise pollution. And I know a lot of people speak about those rights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the gentleman gave an exhibit to the commission. That will be marked as Exhibit C as part of the official record.
Thank you.
Hello, I have a quick comment.
Name and address, please.
Yep, Cassandra, 6709 North Broadway, Kansas City. I grew up in Clay County my entire life, and I'm raising a young family in Clay County. I intend to stay in Clay County for the rest of my life. So I have a vested interest in this. And someone spoke earlier about those who have a vested interest should be the ones that have the say. But you know, another thing that's a vested interest is not just monetary, but community, health, feel, and safety of our families. And I want to point everyone's minds to, maybe something you haven't thought of, but Jackson County health data about these cities with the developments, and how that negatively impacts age and health of those citizens that live in those compacted areas and developed areas, and that we need to consider, be like the gentleman before me was saying, how Clay County has all this wonderful green space and area that provides us that health and safety and community for our young families. And if you want young families to continue to live here, that's a big draw for Clay County. That's why people maybe don't want to live in Jackson County or somewhere else close by. The only other thing I wanted to mention tonight was just that where I live right now, and even just north of 69, north of Liberty, there's a lot of developed area that just got clearcut, completely clearcut, and hasn't been developed for years at this point. And as a person that lived in these areas my whole life, I drive by these areas every day. It's really disheartening to see, one, the clearcut of all those trees for no apparent reason at this point, and the talk about developing more whenever these areas are not being developed as is, and we're losing the benefits of those natural areas for years for some reason. So I just wanted to mention those couple of things. Like I said, let's look at Jackson County and other really urban areas that have developed so much that that health has impacted literally to citizens. And I just want to keep that in mind going in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Linda Hetzel, 13318 Plattsburgh Road, Kearney. I've been a citizen in Clay County since 1984. I am a landowner. I'm a farmer. I produce thousands of pounds of wild and heirloom fruit, vegetables, herbs, flowers, and sell to the region. And sprawl adversely impacts me as a landowner, because the sprawl tends to be smaller parcels that convert to toxic lawns and adversely impact the watershed. I appear today to urge the Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt the plan as recommended on December 3. The version of the plan was carefully crafted over the course of months from input of hundreds of dedicated citizens and local stakeholders. Any attempt to change this proposed plan this late in the process without adequate public involvement is an insult to those of us who have been involved from the start and a violation of the county's duty to represent all of its citizens and engage in the public process. Multiple supporters who worked on the plan development for dozens of hours over more than a year spoke in favor of adoption of that plan, though this fact was not apparent in the findings section of the meeting minutes. A small group of landowners that are not representative of all the citizens, but are advocating for their own personal and financial interests, derailed the meeting in protest. They admitted not participating in the year-long county-wide consultant-directed focus group and multiple-meeting process. Those individuals asserted that they want development to be allowed as it has been, and were permitted to repeatedly violate stated meeting protocols that have been respected and followed by the dedicated members of the comprehensive plan consultation process over a year. Periodic review is already provided for in the plan. Special interests always have the ability to petition, but within specified public transparency. No notice of this rewrite was found in my last week's Kearney, the Courier-Tribune, the paper of record for the county. My stakeholder email was received by me at 2:43 yesterday. Clay County Compass Statement asserts that the county is a leader in county collaboration and communication, effectively working with its community members' businesses.
Thank you.
And I have attachments that talk about the demise of the trends-
And I have attachments that talk about the demise, the trend, and the loss of farmland.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And that attachment will be added as Exhibit D.
D.
By Ms. Hetzel.
Thank you.
Carla Dodds, 5308 Kansas City. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I did speak in December. I came to speak in support of the original Compass 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the following reasons, but as I read through this, you'll see that there may be some caveats based on tonight's presentation. Reason number one is the planning process. As stated earlier, residents and professionals throughout the community contributed to the Compass 24 planning process. Stakeholders donated their time to lend their professional and their personal knowledge about Clay County and its wonderful assets to formulate a plan for the entire community. They took time from their work and their families to give back to the community to participate. The planning process, as has been talked about at several meetings, is the standard and the best practice for this profession. It is a challenge to meet the very needs and desires of the community. It is a give-and-take process with numerous inputs throughout the planning and public engagement activities. This includes input from members of this commission and the Clay County Commissioners. Changing the land use plan at this point is disheartening. The community contributed valuable time and money to develop a good plan for Clay County. Also, the people who completed surveys and attended public meetings, as previously stated. If you're going to change the land use map, then a robust public engagement process must be included to include the entire community, to voice their opinion, not just the select present at planning and zoning meetings, or those who have the ear of the commission and staff. Reason number two, ripple effects. The elements of the comprehensive plan are connected and integrated with all the other elements. Changing the land use map impacts the other elements, land use goals, transportation, economic development, parks and recreation, plus the financial impacts for Clay County and the taxpayer residents for the next 20 years. If you revise the land use plan, all the other elements of the comprehensive plan must be assessed and revised as appropriate to truly reflect how Clay County will move forward in the years ahead. Number three, transparency. Compass 24, 2040 was a 12-month planning process that included several opportunities for the community to weigh in. This transparency is vital in government and brings integrity to the plan and the people charged with the implementation, including members of this commission and elected officials. Changing the comprehensive plan with limited input from the public is not transparency. So I implore you, if you're going to change the plan, robust transportation, engagement needs to be happened.
Thank you.
And that exhibit will be added as Exhibit E.
E. Thank you. Next.
James Godwin, 13904 North Ryan King Road, Smithville, Missouri. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. And first, I think I'm going to take a step back to what some people were doing in the beginning and thank Kip and the team for working on this Compass 2040. I think it's important, it's important now in the time of Clay County. I came today to speak on behalf of the December Plan and encourage you to approve that plan. I was a bit surprised by some of the new stuff, and so still am speaking in support of the December Plan. You know, what solidified my support even today for that December Plan was when Kip stood up here and said, "This is a living document. This is a document that we plan to bring to you on an annual basis to review against the progress of Clay County year over year over year." With that in mind, I wonder then why the current proposal has a menu of options available upfront? Because if we're going to review the plan year over year, why not start with the base, see how progress is occurring, and then discuss options for the future? Rather than have a menu, a large menu of options that we're discussing each year and either adjusting options that were available, adding additional options, so we end up with a book of options available, and maybe even have options made available initially that are never used. And so with that, I speak to the December Plan for preservation of that land, but to continually evaluate and see how growth and progress of the county is going and add options during that annual review. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tanya Spencer. I live at 8721 Northeast 172nd Street, Kearney, Missouri. This is all a lot over my head, and when I care about something a lot, I get emotional, but I appreciate you letting people like me come up and speak. My husband and I lived on five acres in Liberty in the city limits for 30-plus years and raised our kids there. When we would go to the lake, we would take extra drives around the lake and look at all the open spaces, dreaming of when we could have an empty nester place out there. We were very impressed with the development of Clay County. That's why, even though we were raised in Jackson County, we choose to live in Clay County. We were impressed with the development around the lake. That on one side of the lake, there were more condensed areas for development that if people tows, those types of residences, they could live. On the other side, it was protected for more open spaces and larger acres for people that desired that, and that's what we desired. So we waited for years and sacrificed and waited until the right property opened up with a pond on it. We bought that land, built our house. But before we did that, there was a large, beautiful farmland that was across the road from us. And we checked in with our realtor and with Kip to say, "What would that happen if that farmland eventually sold to a developer?" And we were told that it would be developed into 20 acres or similar to that because of something about the water runoff was part of the Smithville Water Program and managed by the Corps of Engineers because that land butts up to the Corps of Engineer land. So we felt pretty safe that we would be able to protect that open space. I'm a nurse at Children's Mercy downtown. My husband works at the airport. We didn't take for granted that we had this sanctuary, this beautiful place in an open area, but we could still drive to our places of work. That doesn't happen in Jackson County where my parents still live. We feel honored to do that. And I think what's most distressing to me is that the only comments, which I can see are misleading, from the report of the last meeting was all of those opposed to the original plan. And people said, "I think the landowners weren't taken into account. We're all landowners in that area, and we love that area." And so, of course, we know development's coming, but we want to protect it in a smart way. There was an untruth that was said about nobody owns horses anymore. We have multiple horse owners just in the 10-mile radius around me, much less the rest of rural Clay County. And they ride their horses up and down the road, or they used to, but they haven't in the last year because of construction and the road conditions. And that just affects our quality of life. And part of this board is to protect the quality of life for all of its citizens in all of the areas, rural and urban. And so I'm just asking that you honor and respect all the work that went into the original plan in 2020.
Thank you.
Hi, and I'm Catherine Scheck, and I live on 168th Street, the road that is a third, like, looks like it comes from a third world country, and I spoke about that at the last meeting. And I just wanted to address Kip for a moment. You've done a fabulous job. I'm in favor of the original plan. It was my understanding after reading some correspondence, after many, many venues and meeting people and talking to people and the surveys, that the majority of the people were in favor of the original plan. And so we came to the meeting, I wasn't even really planning on speaking, we just wanted to support the plan. And a lot of these are my neighbors, and they're new. They've just recently built homes and moved to the community, and we are so blessed because we felt that the quality of the people in our neighborhood have just risen so high, and it's so wonderful. So I'm not against having new people come in, but I am about preservation. And I am about the fact that when we came to this meeting, I felt that we were being kind of slammed by a lot of people that were speaking against the plan that Kip worked so hard to develop. And the reason I felt this is because most of the people that spoke, when I heard their voices, I heard that they were trying to sell property. I heard they were trying to take big property and cut it down into smaller sections so more people would have an advantage to, you know, be able to buy that. I get it. We bought 22 acres 20 years ago, and it was hard raising our family, putting them through college. But the beauty of the land, I cry when the Martins come. I saw 12 reindeer the week after we moved in, and my son said, "Did one of them have a red nose?" I mean, we just love it there. We have fox, we have coyotes. But we also have a lot of building that has happened, and so it's squeezing those animals out. We didn't even have bees last year. I didn't have any fruit on my trees. And I don't know what environmental situation has happened to, I always can and put up and freeze peaches and apples and all kinds of fruit, no fruit trees, no bees. So there is an environmental impact, what is happening today. And it's not about how much land we can split up and sell, how many subdivisions we can make. I really commend you for bringing up the Agenda 2030. Because the agenda in 2030, for those of us that have started reading about it, is to develop smart cities. And that is the focus, and that's where a lot of the organizations are heading, the corporate world. They want to keep people contained in an area where it's only 15 minutes to the grocery store. So thank you for your consideration to ask that plan and go back to the original. Thank you, Kip.
And if we have more people that speak, if you want to queue up, so you're ready, that would be great.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said if there's more people that want to speak, if they want to kind of line up, so we're not waiting a couple minutes between speakers.
Anyone else like to speak? All right, we're going to close the public speaking portion. This is time for the board discussion. We're closing the public speaking section, so.
And we did just receive an additional written letter that will be Exhibit F that Shane will hand out.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any comments or questions?
Well, I'll comment. I think what Kip has done is, I like this one better. I had some severe reservations on the original one. I thought it was the concentric circles driven, drawn around the cities. We're going to stifle, just like Kearney was talking about having trouble expanding beyond those 510s. I think that managed area is a really good idea, although I have some concerns, as the director does, on comments from the city. I think if we require it, I can see it holding up, you know, permits that come through. So, but I think, in general, I think this is a better plan. I think it concerns some of the larger areas. It still addresses some of the concerns of the larger landowners. I know, Kip, can you pull up, this is in the comp plan, it's the existing land use, it's Figure A2.
In the current?
It's in the, it's in your final, I don't know, it's in the final, Clay County Compass Final Plan, it's part of that. It just shows the density of the county, and I know that particular graphic caught my eye when I was reviewing a lot of this. It's on page 103 of 308.
Okay, yeah, let me, give me a second while I get there.
No, it's not in, it's not in your, it's in the original comp plan, or it's in the original 2040 plan, Clay County Compass Final Plan.
Okay, the one we presented in December?
Yeah, I just thought it really shows the density of the county and the development in it currently. It's, yeah, I'd say throw it in as Exhibit. But regardless, I think what you've added with the municipal services, I think that's a really good idea, as I mentioned earlier about the closed sewer systems and the ability to make sure that those wastewater treatment plants are operating like they should, putting out, you know, water that meets a quality. So I think I'm in favor of the exceptions table that you've put together. I think the half-mile radius around existing parcels makes 100% total sense. I think it makes things more consistent. So, yeah, I think, I like what you've done. I think it's an improvement over the last plan.
And I promise I'll get there. Give me just a second.
While he's looking for that, are there any other comments or questions from the board?
I'd like to get the data on why a median as opposed to alternative ways of looking at the half-mile radius is the preferable way to go, as opposed to an average or something along those lines. I'm also interested in what control the cities have in the managed growth area. The property that I have lies within that, and while I certainly accept the fact that landowner rights are subject to the county and the cities and are important, I'd like to at least find out what sort of deference the county has to pay to the cities.
Are you asking that specifically of us on the board or specifically of Kip?
Well, I think it's something I want to get from Kip before we decide on a proposal, final proposal. It might be something that can be addressed for the revision, final revision for next month.
Let's let Kip find the document that was requested, and then we're going to have you speak up. We can't hear you.
Oh, you can't?
So you're going to have to get closer to the microphone and speak up, but wait, let's let Kip find this document.
I thought it was just me.
So I'm on page 101.
Uh, 103 of 308.
This one here?
No, keep going. It's Figure A2.
That one?
That one, yeah, that one.
And you want to add that as an exhibit?
I just think, I just think you have to take a look at it because it shows the density that's going on in the county right now. The yellow is the, basically the smaller, the smaller parcels throughout the county. I mean, it's looked like somebody shot it with a shotgun, and it's peppered all over. I was really surprised when I took a look at that.
And I just want to make a comment in relation to that, is that we've been operating under the 2008 version of this document. So really what we're talking about tonight is trying to update that and move forward with it. If you go back within the county, going back into the 70s and 80s, we had 1-3 acre lots that were way too close together, that had open septic systems, known as lagoons, and things were a little bit uneven in how the development occurred. So this development is the overarching document that's supposed to give us direction, but we do need to remember we have a land development code, and that land development code is really what is directing what is allowed. And that document's going to have to be modified with this document, so we do have some additional things that are going to have to happen. So if we can add this as an exhibit, and then if you can repeat your questions, much louder.
Yeah, okay, I'll try to do it much louder. I have two concerns. One is... One is, KIP said that the use of a median as opposed to alternative such as an average was a better way to determine the lot size. I'd like to see the data that demonstrates why that is a preferable criterion to use.
And can I ask a clarification on that?
I think what he's asking is why do we want to use median within that half-mile radius instead of the average?
Right.
I'm going to make a comment, and then you can answer, and my comment is, the median is going to get rid of your smallest and your largest, and it's going to get you closer to what the nominal size of the neighboring parcels are. Because if you have a one acre sitting next to a 40-acre piece, which he gave a specific example, that one acre is going to skew your average much, much lower. And if that 40 acre is surrounded by other 40 acres, that one acre is going to take you much lower. The median drops off that smaller and the larger where it gets more.
I understand that. I want to see some practical examples such as he used for what the concrete differences would make perhaps in, in the actual examples that you used for the median.
So that's my question to you. Could I use the same examples and just provide you the average?
Sure.
Be happy to do that.
And what was your second question?
A 40 acre will skew it as much as a one acre will, so.
Correct. On the top and bottom, they both get dropped off.
Right. My second concern was within the managed growth area in terms of the relationship between the county and the city, in terms of how decisions are going to be made for the use of that, what, what control will the city have over those decisions? I live within that area. I have property within that. And my, my question ultimately is whether or not this, what are the criteria that are going to be used by the city and the county to adjudicate between differences in terms of what land use could be made?
Do you have any?
Yeah, so, so I picture that, the, and there was some discussion earlier, we would require comments from the city. So what they're going to look at and what we're going to look at is, is it in one of those annexation areas that they've provided as part of the comprehensive plan? If not, then we're going to have a discussion with them about if they annex farther, what do they see that area becoming? So it basically becomes, even though it's unincorporated, it becomes an area where the city has veto power, basically.
Well, that's, that's a concern, that the city actually has veto power over it.
Well, and again, with any case, and I think Commissioner Lawson mentioned this, just if somebody applies for a development within that area, city comes back and says, no, that's against our comp, that's against our future growth plan, they still have a route to go to apply for that. So that still could come in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the County Commission, and those boards would have the discretion to either approve it if they think it makes sense, or deny it and take the city's recommendation.
Do we, do we have a similar request now?
We do. It's part of the, and that's where I think, if I had a rebuttal to all the comments or some of the comments today, is a lot of these ideas are in our current comprehensive plan, and I've heard that the current comprehensive plan isn't broke, don't fix it. Well, I think it, the current comprehensive plan is broke because it allows those five and 10-acre lots to be broken up, where we're not going to be able to develop certain areas, and the whole county is going to be a five or 10-acre lot, where we're not going to be able to preserve any of those areas. But yes, the, any, any project now that's within a mile and a half of the city, we reach out to the city. If the city makes comments that they're opposing it, that ranks very highly in the, to staff. Most likely, we would recommend denial to the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission. So it's not a whole lot different than what we have now.
But the managed growth area is different between what you had in December and what you have now.
It is larger, yes.
Yes.
It got rid of that three-acre area that was about a half-mile radius, and we extended the managed growth area. So, so the three acres could still be allowed there if the city agreed with the three-acre size.
So it's a safe assumption the cities would most likely want higher density so they can more easily annex it and develop through it?
Yes, I have somebody that's contacting me now. It's just, it's adjacent to Kansas City, Missouri, and they're calling for residential low density. Again, with our current comp plan, we're going to push them to annex into the city or take those city recommendations. They're wanting to do, you know, five to seven-acre lots. That's most likely not going to be allowed.
I guess, and seeing it from the city's perspective, those smaller, higher-density would probably have closed sewers, which would make it easier for them to run municipal level services, hook onto that, eliminate the central plant, put it into their, into their main treatment plant. I, yeah, okay, makes sense.
Did that address your questions?
Well, yes, it answers my question. Whether it satisfies me is another question.
Anyone else? Do you have anything else you'd like to add, KIP?
Well, I, so a couple of the comments, you know, the public notice was mentioned. I can assure you the public notice was completely, was, was done correctly. There was a comment about the areas where two districts will merge. So there's going to be some parcels that are within the 20 and the 40-acre area or a five in a transition zone. That's no different than the current comp plan. The way, you know, there's some discretion, unfortunately, with my job. The way we handle that now is we generally go with the more lenient use that's allowed. So if it's a five in a, in a 10-acre area, if part of it's in the five, we typically allow the five-acre lots. And I would, as long as I'm here, I would still consider doing that. And then the last one was about who grants exceptions. I think the exceptions are pretty black and white, so obviously Planning and Zoning staff would make that decision. Obviously, anything can be appealed to the, by written interpretation or to the Planning and Zoning Commission or County Commission. So those were just a couple of questions that were asked. Again, I don't, I don't have any other comments other than I would like some direction as to how we want to move forward.
We kind of glanced, kind of glazed over those transition zones. I think that's, I think that's the right thing to do, where we're going from, so we're not going from super big to super small. We've got a buffer area there, so I think that was, because that was something you added.
Correct. Correct, that was an addition, yes.
Yeah, makes sense, just like the managed growth areas.
And I agree with that, and I think we're having an issue also where out in the middle of the county, we have a subdevelopment put in that's three acres, and there might be 30 lots. And we're saying right next door, you must have a 40-acre lot. It doesn't make sense. So we do have to have some leeway, but I think we have a good process in place now with the 2008 plan that we're trying to improve with this plan, where we can accommodate that and get the size-appropriate lots for the location within the county that's being Any other comments?
The new version is definitely more applicable. I wouldn't be in favor of going back.
At this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to be heard on this. You're going to have to state whether the motion is to approve or disapprove. If the motion is to approve, I would like to add a condition. Is that allowed? Do you have a question?
No.
Can we add a condition that this has to go to the County Commission for review if this is going to be different than what they approved for December?
So you could, so this is opposite of most cases. So the County Commission can remand things back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you could choose to remand this back to the County Commission. I would ask you not to take a vote at that point. Your motion would be to remand it back to the County Commission. You could choose to do that. You could choose to approve either version, deny either version, or give me some direction and continue it to the March meeting.
So, but what you were asking earlier was for direction, and you were planning on bringing something back in March.
Yeah, that was, that was my plan. I don't want to keep you from, you, you are more than welcome to vote tonight. I didn't expect with the amount of public comment we were going to have that you would be ready to vote. But yes, my initial, my initial thought was to give me some direction of what you like, what you don't like. We'll bring a final, final plan back to you in March, and you'll vote.
So I think we've given the feedback, unless the board has something else that they would like to state. Mine was a question is if this is, if there is a motion to approve, can we add the condition that it be sent to County Commission? And you're stating, no, the motion would need to be that we remand it back, or we can have a motion to approve, or we can have a motion to deny, or we can have a motion to continue to a date in the future.
Correct.
At one of our meetings.
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to ask for that motion. Somebody's going to have to make the motion, and we will have a discussion about that motion before we second it. Do we have a motion?
I've got a question. Is there more fine-tuning that you think needs to be done to this? Is this your final version?
With the feedback that I've received tonight, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like to me the updated version is what the board would like approved. So if you're going, if you like this, the newer version with no changes, excuse me, if you like the newer version with no changes, then no, I don't think there needs to be any revisions. If you want to include some of the December meeting, or December map into the new map, then yes, I would want to go back and make those revisions.
And I, I'm going to make a comment that I think there can always be additional changes, but we've already agreed that this is going to be a living document. So at this point, I think we need to make a motion to continue for further discussion, remand it back to the County Commission for review, motion to approve or a motion to deny, so that we can move this from our agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Do, do we want to make any other changes to your approval? Any conditions, or you like the existing plan as submitted?
Like you said, it's a living document, so.
Do we, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Tom Decker.
Abstain.
Randall Morris.
No.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
So, group's couple of people speaking don't matter.
Okay, we're still, we're still in session.
That's all right. I'm leading a couple of, I'm not currently.
Is there any other business?
No, I just have a couple of comments. So the case from last month, if you remember, it was the, the four lots off CNW Highway. They had the one lot with no road frontage. That is going to border zoning adjustment later on this month, and I think that is my update. I would say, if anybody has questions about the comp plan, please reach out to my staff, get on my schedule. We're happy to talk about the comp plan. Thank you.
We are adjourned.
He lived right up here on C Highway.
Had he played any?
11 years is what he had. He played for 11 years and give her up. Got a couple of kids and likes being a dad. And he coached a little, he coached a little bit last year in Lawson, and he's just, he's still kind of searching what he wants to do. Well, he's, you know, he, I always tell people, he was on my phone bill for three years when he was in the NFL, and that, he was sure, he was sure hanging in there on Dad's deal, I can tell you that. Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.